Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda this evening is the oath of office. And if we could have the new council members from districts one, three, five, and seven, please come to the front to have the clerk administer the oath of office.
If you'd please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I stand by my amendment.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
For the city of Manassas.
For the city of Manassas.
Winnebago and Calumet Counties.
Winnebago and Calumet Counties.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. I have a cold and I don't want to see anybody's semen.
So you can say that for two years.
Aren't you going to go back for a picture?
If you want.
Mom wants you.
For Mrs. Garotti, we'll be taking a picture. And at this time, if we could have the clerk call the roll.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevenik.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Tom Garotti.
Here.
Alderman Ted Garotti.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
The first item on the agenda is public comments and any matter of concern to the city. You have five minutes.
Sandra DeBild Taylor, 545 Broad Street. First, I want to thank all of you, especially those newly elected, for taking your time out of your busy schedules, especially those that work full-time, because doing this is not, it's a thankless job. Sometimes, no matter what you do, you can't make everybody happy. And even though you're paid, by the time you break down how many hours you spend reading ordinances and going through the paperwork and going through the packet and answering your constituents, I mean, it's probably pennies, wouldn't you think of it? So I want to thank you. With that being said, what a difference a year makes. I think last year, every office was contested. And so I don't know if I should say, you're doing such a great job that nobody ran against you, or if the mayor just feels content that you aren't threatening him or his vision. So what I did want to speak about was the rules for the common council that you're going to adopt for the next coming year. First off, I've asked this for several years. Your meetings are held on Monday nights. In the rules, it actually says that your packet would be available Friday. I think under the current circumstances, you get it Friday. But the language in here actually says it will be prepared and available on Friday. If that were to become the case, that's true with the public, we cannot view anything until Friday afternoon. If you were to move your days to Tuesday, that would at least give you a day, a working day, to speak to staff or have questions answered. What you're left with is a weekend. If you were to get your packet on a Friday night and you vote on it Monday, especially those that work, you have absolutely no time to get answers from staff or speak to constituents or every weekend is spent doing this. And if you want to attract younger people and other people who are not retired or self-employed, you're never going to find someone who's going to be willing to give up all their weekends to read packets. And a lot of jobs do not allow you to be calling staff. So tonight would be a night that you could change that to any day of the week you wanted. Or you can change that you get your packet earlier in the week. It wouldn't have to be Friday. It's up to you. You're voting on this tonight. So you can change it. And I think the more time you have to evaluate something, the better. Another item under the Order of Business, I would like to see report of department head staff and consultants moved ahead of the public comment. So many times, if you have a consultant give a presentation on like one of the vision plans, or they come with a TIF district and they want to explain it, the public is commenting before they hear the presentation. And so you're kind of either not making a fool out of yourself because you don't know that the presentation is different than what you've read, or sometimes what's real embarrassing is if you have someone present a check, or you got the voice scout here or something, and take me for example, I come up to complain about something, they have to listen to it, you know? So it's something that I would consider that the public wants to hear these reports and get input, and then that would actually educate the people in the gallery of what was actually going on. The other item that I really wanted to address was the use of electronic devices. Item four was edited. I don't have a problem with eliminating item three, but item four, I question, it says they will not be allowed at all. I mean, again, if you look at other communities, they're using iPads, they're using electronic devices rather than hauling in a stack of papers. If they want to refer to a previous agenda item or minutes, or you're talking about something and they want to pull it up, they can look at it. You're eliminating electronic devices entirely. It almost, if you're concerned about people talking or texting back and forth to each other, it's no difference than the communication that's going on. I mean, the mayor and the attorney are whispering and aldermen are talking back and forth. Why can you not use an electronic device, have it with you in case something's being discussed and someone has a question about, well, what does the ordinance say? You can pull it up. You don't have to have to haul it in here with you. And especially, again, I mean, and I'm the most low-tech person there is, and I use it to reference material. Now, you want to attract younger people to get involved in the community, they were born with a smartphone. You know, they don't know what using paper and marking things up is. So I really kind of question if this isn't just like paranoia, that somebody's going to text somebody something during a meeting. But I think, and again, of course, I've always had the issue with the consent agenda, and I thank Alderman Sevenik for pulling so many items out of the consent agenda because they should be voted on individually. And also, just to reiterate, that the mayor does not set the agenda, and that's state statute. The clerk assembles it from what is provided to her, but the mayor does not set the agenda. Any alderman can place any item on the agenda. But I do think you should take into serious consideration the time that it takes to properly go through a packet and consider changing the date of your meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. We'll move on to item G, Report of Department Head Staff Consultants. There is one communication. Alderman Sevenik.
Are we just accepting and receiving the Board of Canvas' report in minutes of April 2nd, 2019, the spring election?
Is there a second? So motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 12, do we have a motion? Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve Resolution R-12-19. It's a resolution adopting the rules of the common council and mayor, introduced by myself, Alderman Langdon.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there discussion? Alderman Taylor? Oops, sorry.
Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment to this.
Sure.
I thought it was very refreshing that yesterday I got to meet with the department head and talk about an issue the day before. And I really do like the Tuesdays rather than trying to cram everything on Monday. So I would like to make a motion to move our council meetings to Tuesday.
Is there a second to amend council meetings to be Tuesday evening? I'm not sure where exactly that is. I'm trying, do you know where it is in here, Alderman Taylor?
That's in Resolution 1210.
No, but where, did you see it in?
1219, rather, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. So you want to change Section 101, Item 1, to the first and third Tuesday is what your amendment is, correct?
Yes.
And there was a second by, I forget who. Okay, discussion? Are you finished, James? Are you finished with your amendment?
Asking you.
Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you. Sandra Taylor was talking about that we didn't have enough time because the packets weren't available until Friday, but we actually get our packets on Thursday, which gives us a full day on Friday and on Monday in order to, if we had to talk with staff and that. And most of what's on our agenda and stuff is what we already took place in committee. I'd say about, what, maybe 80%? We did it the night before, or the council meeting before. So changing the date, I don't think is, at least it's not doable for me. I would prefer that we keep it to Monday. But it is a good point, but the way to resolve that is we get our packets earlier, and we do.
Alderman Repella.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Sandra and all her comments each week. I tried to pick my packet up on Thursday night, so I'm just going to echo what Alderman Sevenik had to say. Thursday nights work good for me. Maybe if it was available to the public on Thursday night after 6:00, maybe that would make Sandra happier, Thursday night at 6:00 or something, rather than Friday.
So the reason that we've always done the common council, the aldermen's packets first, is so that you get your packet before the public starts calling you about it? So you actually have a chance to look at it rather than having one of your constituents call you and you say, I have no clue what you're talking about. So that's why it comes out on Thursday night for the alderman and then Friday, usually around noon for the public. But that's. Some of them don't get picked up till Monday.
That's right.
So. Exactly. Ted?
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of like Sandra's idea. I mean, with me working full-time, it is a little bit harder to get stuff taken care of on a Monday. Either way is fine with me. Mondays have been working fine, though. The staff here is very, very easy to get a hold of. My job, sitting at a desk, I mean, I can text or call or whatever, and I usually get response by noon or 1:00 on major issues. So it is a valid point, I understand that. And to get maybe like a younger millennium up here, as other staff people or other aldermen running, that might be an option, but I'm fine either way. So I'll probably just stay with the Mondays.
Alderman Taylor?
Just want to say that, and no disrespect to department heads at all, vacations in the summertime, a lot of people take Fridays off and a lot of people, and it's just really tough to get a hold of somebody on a Friday at City Hall here, especially during the nicer time of the year. And I think it'd just make us all better aldermen to have it on a Tuesday. Like I say, yesterday was really nice that department heads aren't pressured. They might have a lot of things going on that day, and it's nice to have that extra comfort day on Monday to talk to our department heads. Thank you.
Alderman Kruger?
I thank you, Mayor. Moving it to Tuesday for me personally would absolutely destroy my career. I can't, you know, I would never be able to do that. And I can't stay around on Monday and wait for Tuesday to end and then go and hit the road and try to get work done within three days. So I'm going to stick with the Monday.
Okay, Alderman Nichols?
I'll just add my two cents. My entire family's schedule is built around Monday night meetings and my council life. I'll just put that out there. And it has been for a long time, and we all know what's going on. And I've been known to call department heads at, I don't know, 9:30, 10:00 at night and leave a message so that when they arrive at 8:00 in the morning, they can say, oh, I need to call Alderman Nichols sometime today. So I think that, you know, we all just find a way to make it work, and we do what works best for us. But to, you know, throw a wrench in it now would upset a lot of things that we personally have going on and, you know, the community's very used to first and third Monday council meeting. Thank you.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let it be known that I should have, I didn't say it before, but I seconded for discussion, and we had a good discussion on this. And I just wanted to mention quickly that I think staff, you know, I got a call early from Josh, you know? He returned my call. Attorney Captain got back to work, and I think she fit me in even though she didn't have time. But I called her and I said, I got some really, to me, some really important questions because I didn't understand something. And I asked her, when can I come in? And she goes, well, when are you up? And I says, I'll be there in a minute, and she says, I'll be waiting. So thank you for that. I think staff does bend over to, you know, if we got a question that, before Monday night's meeting, they're around. So thank you.
Did you have something else, James?
After the amendment, then I'm going to make another amendment. Thank you.
So the motion on the floor is to amend, to change the Monday date to Tuesday. I think we're going to need to have a roll call vote because it looks like there's going to be a mixed vote. Oh, you can just change date to Tuesday? That's fine. We all will know what you mean when you write the. Did the whole thing?
It did, I'm sorry.
She did the wrong one anyhow. There we go. There's a call.
It was, it showed 8-1, or 7, 1-7.
1-8. Mayor gets to vote on it too because it's the rules of the common council and mayor.
So let's try this again, let's see if we're going to get. You're going to vote here?
Yeah, this one I have to vote on.
Oh, okay. 1-8. So let's see if it'll.
Motion.
I did.
Motion fails on roll call 1-8.
Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment that we receive our packets on Wednesday night. And I know that it was difficult for everybody to move their pendants, and I appreciate that. I didn't know we were all locked into it that much, but that's fine.
Is there a second? Seeing no second, the motion dies. Is there any for Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make an amendment under Section 1.04, Order of Business. I would like to change number five to make that number six, and number six to be number five.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Sevenik? Is there any discussion on the amendment? Did you want to discuss the amendment, James? James, did you want to discuss the amendment, or did you want to make a different one? Seeing no further discussion. Oops, Alderman Nichols? Okay, no further discussion on the amendment? This is just on the amendment? Yes, did you want to discuss that? There you go.
Thank you. I'm just seeking some clarification as to the reasoning.
I think Mrs. Taylor commented that it might be nice if we're having presentations to allow the public to be able to speak after the presentation rather than before the presentation. I guess there's pros and cons both ways because if the public speaks first, then they can put their question out there, and then the presenter can answer it. But if you do it the other way, then the public has an opportunity to comment on the presentation. So there's pros and cons on each side, I think. Did you want to comment further on that, Alderman Nichols, or no? Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering, I know where it says department head, staff, and consultants. Is there any way that we could get like a monthly report from Joe Polzin on what type of fines he's given out during the month? And.
No, that wouldn't be appropriate. We can.
Okay, oh, all right.
We can definitely give updates. We did when I first became mayor, and I was basically told that we didn't need those updates. So if we want to start those again, we can definitely do it. If you ever want an update on something in particular, just let me know.
Okay.
We might not be able to do it the next meeting, but we can usually get it on the agenda within one or two meetings.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Oops, I guess we're, are you okay with recording it that way? Okay. So the motion failed. Passed. 8-1 with Alderman Nichols voting against, because I'm on the list as well. Okay, Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, I would like that report of officers be returned to our council agenda.
That would be the same of report of department head, staff, and consultants. Do I change the title to report of officers rather than report of department head, staff, and consultants?
Well, that's how we used to have it. I thought it was more appropriate that way, but, so you're saying, when I look on the agenda here, it's.
It's item five now, report of department head, staff, and consultants. Not all the department heads are officers, so that would limit it to just three of them, I believe, that are considered officers? But you can do that if you'd like to.
Yeah, I would.
You could just change the title to department heads, officers, staff, and consultants.
What is your amendment, James?
Officer and, well, I would like to see department heads on there, or officers, report of officers. And as Stan stated, the other three, if you want to put them on there like that.
So you, on item 1.04, you want to add officers to item six, which is going to be item five now. So you want to change that to report of department heads, officers, staff, and consultants, minutes to receive and communications?
Sure. I think it covers everything.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? Do we, all those in favor? Opposed? I'm opposed. I think it's redundant. The motion carries 8-1 with the mayor voting no. Alderman Taylor?
I would like to make an amendment that all council committees have public comments on the agenda before and after, as the council packet does. Sometimes in committee, there's very important things that the community would like to talk about, and I think it's good transparency. I think we get to hear from the public too in those committees before it goes to the council packet. So all committees have a public comment before and after on their agendas.
So I'm just, this is the rules of the common council? And then each committee makes its own rules? Is it someplace? I was looking forward to see. I'm not sure where it goes. I would say that's not germane to this. I would say that's not germane to this-
Change tonight here, that no members shall be allowed to, or, I'm sorry, the use of electronic devices during a meeting shall not be allowed while the common council or committee is in session. So, there's another, where it states the committee. And we voted, just voted a change for committees and the council. So, the committees are this body, and I think the transparency and to have our public involved is very important.
The council wants to take that up, I'm going to rule it's not germane. It's a resolution adopting the rules of the common council and mayor, not the committees. Each committee chair would have that ability. So if you'd like to ask the council to override my decision, you can do that, but otherwise, I'm saying that's not germane to this resolution.
Okay, and I'm stating in here, it does state the council or the committee.
Okay, the-
It's already in the rules.
As I said, I'm stating it's not germane. Would you like to have a vote of the common council to ask if it's germane?
Yes.
You can do that. Okay? So, there is a motion to override the mayor's ruling, and if you would, Alderman Nichols?
You might have just been going to say what I was going to ask. Let's clarify what yes means and what no means.
So, if you vote yes, it would be to allow Alderman Taylor's amendment?
What is the amendment?
He would like to amend it to require a-
There wasn't a second.
Oh, there wasn't a second either?
No.
Okay, well, he would like to, I just said it wasn't germane, so yes would mean that it is germane, and then you could ask for a second. No would mean that it's not germane. As I had said, this is the rules of the common council, not the rules of our committees. And each committee chair would have the right to set their own rules for their committee.
That's what it says. I can need a second of it, to override germane?
I don't think they need a second to override, no.
Oh, no?
So.
It's a yes.
To overrule me is a yes, to say it's not germane is a no. Yep, we're gonna have to vote electronically.
It's gonna override the years, we can override the years.
Ruling.
Ruling.
And allow amendment.
It's too germane, they don't have a comment. No, it wasn't a second, but, um-
No, this is just if it's germane or not. Then once we get past that, then you can discuss why you would like the amendment or not. Yes. So if you vote yes, it would allow the amendment. If you vote no, it would not allow James to make that amendment.
But we're not voting on the amendment.
No, not yet. This would just be to allow him to br- allow Alderman Taylor to bring that amendment forward.
I mean, that means?
Yes.
No, that's not what it is. What it means is that-
I can't.
That's too bad.
As long as everyone knows which way they're voting, it doesn't matter if it's-
Motion fails on roll call eight-one.
So we're back to, there was one amendment, right? The motion is amended. Alderman Taylor?
On item 1.29, citizens' right to address the common council. On item three, it does state that persons addressing the common council during the two public partition, participation forums shall be required to state your name, address before addressing the common council or the committee, and their state-
We just ruled against this, we're not discussing this anymore, Alderman Taylor.
Okay, well, I just wanted to state that it does state committee here, and, and the line before it does talk about that too. So, just trying to have more transparency in our government.
Alderman Sevenek?
I don't disagree with Alderman Taylor, and I don't disagree with the mayor. The mayor just basically was saying your motions were, were not germane to this resolution. I agree with that. But I also think that, I agree there should be more transparency, and the committee chairs, whoever those may be, should be the ones who decide that within their own agendas, and I would, would hope that they would do that.
Alderman Taylor?
Our committee meetings are the council. We operate in our-
Alderman Taylor, we just said that we're done with this.
Yeah, I just think, will you let Alderman Sevenek state something on this?
We're, we're done with this. Are we, we're moving on.
Well, why didn't you say that before he spoke?
We're done with this, we're moving on.
Why didn't you say that before?
Alderman Taylor?
His mind was a point of clarification.
Do you have another amendment? Otherwise, we're gonna vote on the resolution as amended. Seeing no other amendments, we'll take a roll call vote on the motion as amended.
This is the entire?
The entire, yes. Was there an amendment?
Yes, the amendment was switching. There's two of them. I said there were, yeah, there were two. There's only one.
Oh, yes, okay. Switch those two. There was, the other one was what?
And adding officers and switching that.
Yeah.
Motion carries on roll call eight-one.
Item M is appointments. The first is the council president. Do we have any motions for the council president?
I'll make a point.
Alderman Kruger?
I make the motion to appoint Alderman Sevenek.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second to nominate Alderman Sevenek? Are there any other nominations? Alderman Repella?
No.
Oh, okay. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? At this point, seeing that there are no other nominations, I will ask the clerk to cast unanimous ballot for Alderman Sevenek to become council president. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Item B is an alderman member to the plan commission. Do we have a motion, a nomination for the alderman member to the plan commission? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to appoint Alderman Nichols.
There's a motion and a second to nominate Alderman Nichols? Are there other nominations? Did you get that, Weston? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, I would ask the clerk to cast unanimous ballot to appoint Alderman Nichols to the, as the alderman member to the plan commission. Congratulations, Alderman Nichols. Is there a nomination for an alternate, alternate member to the plan commission? Alderman Sevenek?
At this time, I'd like to nominate Tom Grady.
There's a motion and a second to nominate Alderman Grady, Alderman Tom Grady, to the plan commission. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing that there are no other nominations, I would ask the clerk to cast unanimous ballot for Alderman Tom Grady to be the alternate member to the plan commission. Do we have a motion to recess to committees at this time? Alderman Sevenek?
Mayor, at this time, I'll move that we recess into the administration committee, the Board of Public Works, and the personnel committee.
So motion and a second, we stand at recess. Thank you.